Welcome all to planning an environment of self mater. I've got the note, apologies, been received from councillors Witherall, Hudson, Sains and Ackland. Thank you, we move to all the papers please here. Gates, Harry. Proclamation of agenda, I'll move to second Theresa, all the papers please here. Gates, Harry. Declaration of interest, I will declare an interest in district licence and committee and will be standing well back for that one, will be chaired by councillor Stevenson. Thank you, any others? Draft transportation strategy. This... Sarah, welcome back.
Thank you.
You're up today today really isn't it? Would you like to go through the process as you can see and any comments on draft transportation strategy?
So as you know, we've been working on the strategy for quite some time now. We started with your city add future consultation process and then we've been developing it from there. The actual strategy includes a 30 year vision for the transport system and objectives for the transport system. And then there's also an indicative implementation plan that we'll come back to after consultation to see whether the community thought that we've got it right or not. And the implementation plan, the wording around it is such that it doesn't commit the council to anything. Any new projects would just come through to the council as part of the next long term plan process. And the implementation plan includes a lot of projects that are already in the council's long term plan. And we do have some pressure to get this strategy out for consultation, which is mainly due to some changes around how the NZTA want us to approach transport planning and the introduction of the better business case approach. And we need to complete that work before we go into the national land transport programme cycle, so that's why we've put this up now. And we'd like to start consulting on it on Saturday.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I was looking through this hard document mostly and raised a few issues, it was clarity. I mean, they've been trying to condense this document down and sort of just things that weren't 100% clear because it's so condensed now. On the whole, I find it really, really not good. Just for points of clarity, I'm looking at page 12, which is first point clarity. And it talks about the central city and north Dunedin safety and accessible upgrade, which is to investigate right throughout the system there, which is good. It talks about less through traffic, but that's less through traffic on certain areas. I mean, it's not everywhere, so can I clarify that? The way it reads now, it says less through traffic, but I just wondered if some sort of rider in there could be in certain areas, not everywhere.
Yep, that'd be fine.
Okay, and... Number four talks about the one way pier, but it makes no mention to the revitalisation of the warehouse area in 14. And I was wondering if that couldn't be some reference made to that because that's part of it. I think that they're interrelated, aren't they? So if you would like to make some comments about... So is the, looking at the one way pier, does that not dovetail with 14 to a degree?
I think that we, they are separate projects, but we could put something under that item four that refers equally to the number 14 as well, which is the one way pier project. Can I just make a point that has been made to me? So we've got project three there, which is the peninsula shared path. And it's been pointed out to me that we've been calling out the Portobello Harrington Point Road improvements for various reasons, because it's not just about a shared path, it's about a civil replacement. So I'll be changing the title of that particular project to align with what we've been calling it.
That would make sense. So the other one is, I'm now over to page 16. 16 is all numbered, one, two, three, four, five, you know, but that's just a page reference. Are people making submissions on this may think that's order of priority and it's not in fact an order of priority at all, it's just a reference to projects.
Yeah, so at the top of the table, that table, it says project number and then it's the project number which refers back to the projects you were talking about.
So that's not order of priority?
No.
I could endorse that concern because that was when I read it last night, that was the first thing I thought of, I had to go back and check it, so I just think it might, needs to be made clearer that it's not.
So on page 12, I can bring out that the projects that present like are numbered for reference to cross reference with that table?
Yeah, maybe on page 16 saying not an order of priority, just project number. Then just to clarify, central city upgrade, that includes the western bypass improvements, doesn't it?
Just one sec. Yep, sorry, what was that one?
Central city upgrade.
Yep.
Now that includes the western bypass improvements.
Yeah.
Somehow I seem to have, that bit got lost off in my reading of it, I don't know why.
Yeah, no, it's explained better in the full document, so I can get a little bit of extra explanation from the full one and put it into the summary.
Right, and the only other thing that I was a little bit worried, the inland port option, that was something that we could look at later. To try and make rail more viable.
So yeah, with inland port, it's a good point, there's a couple of options. We don't have anything included in there about removing the barriers to transporting more freight by rail. And we could have an additional project if the committee were of mind to support it, which would be around identifying what those barriers are. And then including some money in the implementation plan to address those barriers. I wouldn't want to jump straight to the conclusion that it would be inland port, there may be other things that we could do. And that, you know, that would really, we could either do it now or we could wait and go to consultation, we could have some conversations with the port, NZTA and come back to you. And then we could include something later in the piece.
I mean, I'd like to think that we did include something to, in the consultation document, just to identify, what did you say, the barriers to rail?
Rail freight, yeah.
Yeah, and then what we actually do comes out later, but I think if we don't raise it now, then people aren't going to come forward with ideas. So, but that need to be moved as an amendment?
I'd say it's significant enough, yeah.
Sorry?
Yeah, I would say it's significant enough of a change to be moved.
So maybe Madam Chair, that could be considered as an amendment, that the identification of barriers to rail freight? And that was everything, and welcome, Mary, that's your answer.
Thank you. Councillor Derrishaw?
I just have two questions. The first is around the core principles and I note that the first three, which are imminently sensible, are specific to this particular strategy. And the other four, the ones that sit across all of our strategies, I just wondered, my recollection, and I could be recalling this wrong because I couldn't find it this morning. My recollection is that we have a fifth principle which sits across all of them and that's affordability. And I just wondered about whether or not that had been left out because it was to be considered as part of LTP stuff or whether it was simply an oversight, so.
It wasn't left out on purpose, we did look at the other strategies and they had the four principles and we didn't see an affordability principle?
It could be that I was looking at, I was also called out by it recently because I thought there were only four and then I found, and what I thought was a newer document with the first.
There's on page eight, where Sir General Manager just pointed out, transportation objective one, and even has an affordable response effective and safe road movement.
And that's totally fine, my only concern was that it wasn't, it wasn't sitting alongside the other four principles on page 11. And it may just be a discussion with the policy team about whether or not there is one of the five or whether it's something that I found in a ancillary document which isn't relevant anymore.
Yeah, no, I'll look into that.
And the only other query or suggestion that I had was on page 14, the eighth strategy, and I guess it's similar to councillor Stevenson's queries. I just thought, reading it, you would be forgiven for thinking that the strategic cycle network is only about the south Dunedin and central city cycle networks. But actually it's much broader than that, so it may be worthwhile maybe referencing figure seven or something. I mean, figure seven only sort of seems to reference the central and south Dunedin lines as well, which could be a bit misleading.
Yeah, no, I can enlarge on that.
Thank you, councillor Brown?
Yes, my first question is on page 11, Sarah, under your travel demand management, the text that you've got there, I agree with it all, but my understanding of travel demand management was to utilise the existing network more efficiently. So it's how you actually use what you've got rather than creating more. Can you just check it out to see whether that does bring true with land transport's definition?
So, sorry, you're talking about the travel demand management box?
Yeah, it says there to utilise the network more efficiently and provide safer non-car travelling mode options. My understanding that travel demand management is to use your existing networks, so that means you use what you've got before you create, more efficiently, before you go and create new ones.
So can you suggest you put in the word existing?
No, I want you to check it out because I might be wrong, but that's just my recollection of the definition.
I actually think that's how it reads at the moment.
Well, it is, that's fine, but if you just check that out.
Yep, okay.
And my others relate to pages 16 and 17, and I don't know if the questions were even raised. I was confused when I looked at this because I thought we were ranking the projects. And so I'm satisfied that you're looking at, rearranging that, but if you look at your NLTP 2015 to 18, the average member of the public wouldn't know what that means. So we probably need to say a little brief definition along that, that allows us to source the subsidy through land transport Brazil.
Yep.
And I think my reading of the document is that these projects that are in that first box are actually prioritised but not in order because of the application to the 215-18 plan. And then the next lots come into the 18 to 21 plan, am I reading that correctly?
They're not, yeah, they're only prioritised in that they've been put into each different NLTP, so within the kind of table for 15-18, they're not prioritised, they're just...
Yeah, so my point is that...
Get rid of the numbers, just make them bullet points, didn't that, then it won't look like priorities.
It's all real.
Yeah, that was the reference thing we were trying to get to.
What's that?
Well, there could be alphabetically done, there could be AVs.
AVs.
AVs, it doesn't give another priority to them.
The thing is that from our perspective, we're talking to speak all the time.
Yeah.
The general public doesn't understand it and so therefore we need to make it so that they understand what the text means and how they connect and make some comment. And my last question is that if you take, take the very first two bullet points, there's city, central city upgrade and eastern bypass. From the general public's point of view, if they wanted to support that, do they know what they're supporting? You know, what is the cost? I mean, it's quite clear there what the cost may be, but there's no, there's nothing that comes back to them. So if we wanted both those done in the first year, what would it do for our rates?
So the rating impact, well, the main reason for not including that is that this is just indicative. So I guess that would be something that would be worked through as part of the LTP rather than, we really don't want to go too far down that road because it's possible that we might be able to part fund them anyway from existing budgets. So yeah, we haven't worked out the rating impact.
Yeah, well, I thought, you know, I probably think that's misguiding the community a little bit because if somebody picked something that was right at the bottom here, you know, major centre upgrades that's way down here. And they want that to be their number one priority, they really don't know what the effect of it is, what's it going to do to the budgets, what's it going to do to the rates. So how can you actually get the public to actually give a position quite clearly so that you can get some prioritisation from it? I pose that as a question, you may have the answer, but the issue for me is that you want the public to engage and you want them to engage based on their requirements for the city. But you also want them to know that if they want flyovers everywhere, then there's a major cost that comes to that and how's it going to be funded?
I guess the implementation plan, because it's just indicative and high level and as you can see, there's ranges for many of the projects. There's the possibility of part funding some of them from existing budgets, it's just, it's not straightforward. We can't just say, oh, it's going to add this to your rates, this particular project, I just don't see how we can do that given the uncertainty and the fact that it's indicative anyway. It's not a, you know, it's not an action plan for the strategy, it's an indicative implementation plan which the council will consider on a case by case basis at the long term plan, as part of the long term plan process.
So you're quite confident that in the shape and form of it and that you're going to get a response from the general public that's going to be indicative of the community?
I've already had people ringing me about it, even though it's not released yet for consultation, so I think we'll get a good response from the public. We've put questions throughout the document prompting, are these the sorts of things you want to see? And the idea is that it will give us a feel for the projects that people support and the projects that they don't. But in terms of the actual costings, there's more work to be done in that area.
I think the other thing that's worth remembering councillor is that if there was some degree of support at the moment, that piece in particular is anything from this big to this big. That would have to go through the long term, the LTP process and there would be full public consultation again as is required in the LTP before anything came onto our budget. So there is, this isn't the definitive word on whether people want this or not, the details of how that shapes up is the subject to another quite explicit external consultation process.
Yes, I understand that, I'm just, I just want to make sure that we get good participation from the community and that they know what they're submitting on.
Is it all your questions? Thank you, councillor Thompson?
Sorry, Brad, do you know what I was going to ask? I'm assuming that the, that this document will also be online?
Yeah.
Is it able to have links embedded in the document to the more substantive parts of the plan? Because I think it's going to make some of the questions that councillor Stevenson raised, that some of why one thing might be important is also contingent upon a wider kind of thinking. And by breaking it down into its constituent parts, the temptation is for submitters to deal with those when, as constituent parts, when there might be a wider context. And in the overall plan that either might be alluded to or there are other supporting documents that might relate to it. And I think to have the benefit for those who are going to put real time into submitting, to be able to have links to that and also for there to be some references, even if it's a bibliography in the actual document. So for those who are doing it just on paper, they can see that. So a really good example is the two weighing of the one way pier, where it isn't particularly the council suddenly decided they wanted to take a one way system and make it a two way system. It was to facilitate a wider set of objectives, but that doesn't come through in this. And so if I was a submitter who didn't have that background, I would just say, well, why do you want to do that? What a waste of money.
I can talk to these about whether that's possible to embed those links in the document, it sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, it was very...
Sorry, I said I've got you.
I'm sorry.
You've already asked, because I was going to... Sorry. I've just got questions and it's a bigger general one, but it would appear that Weygoaty and Middlemarch and Alton aren't in the maps that you've used. And I'm not quite sure why you've chosen, so on page seven, you've only got part of the city, no preferred household, central households with no access to a motor vehicle. And I'm not quite sure that it changes markedly, but I'm just wondering if it's better given as a chart form because even that data possibly reflects more the type of land that's owned rather than effective. And it's just, and similarly, I don't think Moskell comes out, I don't know, high crash risk areas in Moskell, that doesn't, or any other parts of the city because it doesn't come through map, it's 13?
No, it's just those areas.
Okay, and, yeah, okay, and that's fine, I just think sometimes you could honestly believe that Moskell, except for it's mentioned in number five on page 14 and 15. It doesn't seem like it's feeling part of the city as far as transportation planning goes in this because of the way we've reflected this in the pictures.
We do have another map of the cycle network which takes a wider view and includes Moskell, which we could replace.
I'm happy as long as it's seen as part of the network rather than all of it. And I appreciate that we've trimmed this document down and in the bigger document it will be bigger, but I think you should actually note that this is only part. Again, it's about saying that this is part of the picture, there's more detail behind it. So councillor Stevenson?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, councillor Lewis?
A question relates to your report, Sarah, on page 4.3, and the better business case approach that NZTA have introduced. I'm not sure whether it's the last trigger to secure the funding, but it's an extra hoop and I'm just trying to work out whether, I mean, how small is the hoop and how high is it? Does it, does it put at risk a project that will probably be funding, probably be funded by NZTA? Or is it too early to really understand the steps required in that process? And the second part to that is, are we able to do that internally or does this require us to, you know, some external consultant do that analysis?
You have to use a registered facilitator for the investment logic mapping, which is part of the process. We've already talked to potential consultants, but we're still actually working out the magnitude of the work and we need to have some conversations with the local NZTA office as well. So we're still looking into it really.
I guess it's still a bit unclear how difficult that step will be.
Yeah.
It may not be difficult, but it...
Yeah.
Okay, so councillor Stevenson?
Core principles, we talk here, we've got integrated land use and transportation planning in that first grey box. There's no mention of the district plan. We have principle five of sustainability, there's no mention in there of the district plan. And even though this is the high level one, there should be something in there saying that the transportation plan and the district plan should dovetail. And within six, tertiary precincts, safety and accessibility, if the district plan was to make a commercial zone in the middle of a one way system, that can be a jar and a disjunction between the two. And I think, I think we need to really spell out that the district plan is going to be very idly taken to make sure the district plan, transportation plan don't actually clump.
So we can add a reference to the district plan in that figure six, the first box which talks about integrated land use and transport planning.
So page 11?
Yes, yes, yeah, in the later.
Would you have spatial plan and district plan in there or does that... No spatial plan as well?
Surely it knows, it's taken three.
I think there's already issues with a bit of a clump between the district plan and the transportation plan. And for the submitters, I think it does them justice to put the word spatial plan in there so that they know, so they can refer to it. And I have one other matter, and that's with the tertiary precincts safety. It talks about pedestrian, private pedestrian and cycling environment, does car parking matter with transportation? Because it's something that Lee brings up quite a lot is the car parking requirements. Is that valid to be part of that consideration or not?
That project is one that's come forward from the tertiary precinct steering group.
Car parking not an issue with that group?
Car parking is an issue with that group, their focus for this particular project though is on better provision for pedestrians and cyclists around the campus. But they'd be the first to say that they, they want to provide enough parking as well. It's just that it's been mooted up to this point as a pedestrian and cycling project rather than a review of parking. That's, I mean, it's already been looked at by the second generation district plan team, the parking protocol that we have with the university and whether that's appropriate and whether they're providing enough off street parking. So, yeah, it doesn't really cover the, what I think the intent is from the steering group around that project.
I suppose it's something that submitters could cover and play...
Yeah, I mean, we, it's not like we could, we wouldn't be able to ignore the on-street parking when we're looking at that project. We'd obviously, it's part of the whole roads system, so we'd have to look at the parking. We've already talked to them about, I mean, there's ideas to close various roads down there and we've said, well, if you did that, how would you get enough parking, where would people park? So it's not like it's something that we would ignore.
Okay, so to put the point, the purpose of consultation to have such a tertiary precinct, pedestrian, cycling and car parking requirements, that wouldn't be helpful?
It's been looked at separately though as part of this, your parking protocol review, the second generation district plan, so this is a specific project. It's likely the second generation district plan, so that will happen ahead of that.
Okay, you're right.
So it doesn't fit together very well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for the questions, Mayor.
I just wanted to refer, go back to councillor Stevenson's suggestion that this referenced the district plan. And I note on page eight that the vision actually tacitly references the spatial plan. Insofar as this is a forward looking document, I think would be quite wrong to reference a district plan because we're building a new one. I think we should leave the district, with respect, I think we should leave the district plan out of it because it would be backward looking and I think it would be very confusing to reference a forward looking document with a plan that is soon to be outdated.
Okay, well, can I then say that the proposed new district plan needs to...
No, what I'm suggesting is that it already references the spatial plan which is appropriate, not the district plan, because the district plan implements a spatial plan and that...
I mean, the reason I raise this is because I have concerns, I know that others have concerns about the potential new, the spatial plan people are happy with, but the potential new district plan needing to dovetail with other...
I think the issue here is that we need to get this plan sorted as quickly as possible for other reasons.
So they have a plan.
And they will dovetail at some stage, hopefully. Not all plans will always dovetail, unfortunately things will change, but in order to get through for the regional land transport plan, we have to get this done now and hopefully it will be, part of that consultation will be, I'm sure. The planners have had someone put on to this and how it works as well, yes, thank you.
Can I just, can I say that I think that this and the district plan should reflect the spatial plan, not necessarily dovetail one to one. They both flow out of the spatial plan and that's really clearly referenced here on page eight. And I think we'll be building artificial connections, to be quite honest, at this stage. stage.
Through, she, the, although this is a standalone document, obviously it hasn't been developed in a standalone fashion, you know, with the spatial plan and the district plan and the transportation strategy, there's been quite a lot of work done around making sure that they are, they are singing the same song. Although this is, this deals with one aspect, but that's not to say it is very connected with all those other bits.
Thank you. Any further questions?
It's not a question, we can have a comment later.
Yes, when someone moves the motion, I will, but I'm... Well, I'd like to slightly change it because I think we've had some questions of changes. I'm just wondering whether it would assist, because of the question about priorities, whether the chair of infrastructure services and PNE sign off any changes to the priority order reflecting the discussion that's been around here?
It's not changes to priorities.
No, it's the, how we represent the priorities, sorry. Yeah, yeah, I'm, 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 I'm trying to understand what you mean, so... No, I've predicted that, sorry. And if we just help, it's ready to assist the staff to put that finality plus those other changes that have been noted. I'd like, Sarah, can we just understand the timing for this? Because we've got apparently elections coming up in October and whether this, we need to get this through as quickly as possible for regional land transport plan. Your views on how that process would work out timing-wise?
So assuming that we're okay to go to consultation on the 20th of July, the consultation period would run to the 19th of August and then we have hearings at the end of the week after that, followed by deliberations. And we would aim to get the final strategy back to the full council meeting on the 16th of September.
Yeah. Okay, in which case...
Chair, I just need understanding of the regional land transport committee appointment process. It doesn't, one trip until the end of January, early February, so I would imagine that committee will be up and running until maybe March.
Thank you. There are, the problem is if we do this after the train, then it causes, and the other part of it is, I'm not sure that it would be particularly satisfactory to have a situation where we have this being alive issue, if we can help it, during elections, because it may preclude some people being on hearings, depending on what they may say during elections, which also makes it slightly difficult. I prefer that we have a hearings panel available and it may be here, that they hear all the submissions and only submit, I suggest, say 60% of it. I think there's a sort of fluid, fluidity that would need to that process, but understanding the constraints. So I'm going to suggest that we have a hearings panel of four or five and that we attempt to meet those deadlines specified, but understanding that, wondering who might be in. Would anyone like to move? I'm, sorry?
Yeah, I'm happy to move, but I was wondering...
Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry, she said move, I was just moving, which, which committee you want? You are moving the motion that we do it. Do you, I'm sorry, I've messied this up. Did you have people in mind? Because I think it has to be the chair of PNE and chair of infrastructure services. I know that I've had one expression of interest from councillor...
No, you move that because you've got me, that's fine.
No, I haven't, I haven't got everyone, I'm just wondering.
So I was talking about the mayor and deputy of infrastructure services, whether... Councillor Bean, of us.
Deputy Doherty.
Yeah. You, did you want to do it?
Yeah.
You would like to do it, yeah. Can we say it has to be at least minimum four of those Saks names and then we can, because it again allows, people can't make a, there will be a very tight frame, timeframe and there may be substantial amount of time required to sit on. So at the moment, she, PNE, so chair and deputy chair of PNE, chair and deputy chair of IS and Jinty and the mayor, if that's all right?
Chair, PNE, chair and deputy chair...
Oh, dip, chair and deputy chair of PNE.
Chair and dip chair, oh, yeah.
Chair and deputy chair of IS, the mayor and councillor Mettish. And it has to be four of those Saks because that means that as things get...
So might the resolution say that a hearings panel of, be formed of four of, so following Saks?
At least four.
Yeah, at least, it'd be consistent, at least four of, which is a wording, is that what you meant?
Yeah, that's exactly, I'm relying on them getting this right, I just want to work our way through that. That's been moved by you.
No, I think I plus want to move it, okay. I raised the issue of identification, including identification of barriers for rail freight because it's something that came out of workshops and I wondered if that is appropriate to include. So if the motion was moved as stated, was the inclusion of the identification of barriers of rail...
What I think was the chair of PNE and infrastructure services were going to deal with those issues, being about the priorities and how they're, not priorities, but how they're explained and those other changes, I said, and that was one of those other changes that I think there wasn't any dissenting views about.
Yep.
Yep, yep, yep. Are we sort of clear about what that, have you got somebody put up, him more or less along with his lines?
Oh, yeah, I see it.
So we're in progress. Do we have an idea, we all agree and understand in principle what we've been to?
Can I suggest, can I suggest that the, we've got some flexibility within the Saks. Can I suggest that the chair alternate between two chairs, PNE and infrastructure services? And that gives some flexibility in that regard as well. And we can keep moving even when people are tied up, electioneering or whatever else we'll be doing.
I feel we've got much better things to do than that. There are things. That's just coming in quotes.
Can I speak to you, so while we wait?
Yes, sorry.
That's all right. I, I just wanted, I, I think what we have in front of us, I'm always of the opinion that whatever we put out to consultation should be the best that we can possibly come to before hearing the thoughts of our community and on, if, if, if at all possible, based on feedback that we've had to date from multiple different community consultations. And I think that this document, when I read through it, epitomized all of that. I think it's a really high-quality succinct document which articulates clearly the future challenges, which the best thinking inside these walls is able to, or has, has, has come up with. And I'm really comfortable putting this out to consultation in the, in the full knowledge that we're going to get some really high-quality feedback and I'm really open to hearing that feedback and be excited to hear what the community does have to say about it. But I think staff have done an incredible job in terms of pulling this together, multiple, a large amount of information distilled into a really succinct document. So I think it's a great starting point for a conversation.
Thank you. Any other comments before we consult?
I very much approve of the long view that we take with this document, bringing on a 30-year vision. As the mayor has said, it's a forward-looking document and the very general principles that are in it I agree with entirely, especially things like, yeah, identifying that Eden's main transport challenges, including road safety, rising fuel costs, high dependence on motor vehicles and a safe low-carbon transport system. What I'm not so sure about is that being a 30-year document, that it adequately anticipates that the rise of electric vehicles and the reason I, I've been banging on about electric vehicles in the past, but not earlier today, I felt that this here was the document, really, where electric vehicles are going to be coming into their own. This is a 30-year look forward. The electric vehicle revolution has already happened in some other places. Couple of weeks ago, I was in Shanghai for four days and the number of electric two-wheel vehicles there outnumbered all other two-wheel vehicles. Now, that isn't a statistic that can be reliable because it's hard to pick them when they're driving along the road, but I, I crossed the river a couple of times in a ferry and there's a deck where a whole horde of bikes comes on and then they go off again. And a lot of the bikes that I thought were Vespers to begin with, actually were electric. The electric revolution has happened in Shanghai and other cities in China. It hasn't happened in Europe yet. I was amazed that in places like Berlin, Heidelberg, Barcelona, there are very few electric bikes, as, as here in New Zealand. But I have absolutely no doubt that they're coming. The recent advice I've had from, an importer from Taiwan is that he can land and retail an electric bike with a 300-watt motor here that folds up and goes to a boot-to-be car, by the way, for $692. This represents a sea change in technology and this sea change will necessarily flow through to the next 30 years of our transportation vision. What is going to happen without doubt and the economic drivers are going to be far, far more compelling than any driver we might have policy-wise here, what's going to happen is that the, the whole cyclist-motorist division that we currently look at and we want to have separate cycle lanes for is going to be completely blurred in a very short amount of time, a matter of years in single digits. We're going to see a situation where electric bikes are going to be travelling as fast as cars in town and they won't be using the cycle lanes, they will be on the main road. And that is one of the main reasons why I think that although as an interim measure, some cycle lanes and routes are probably appropriate, for a 30-year document, I think we need to be looking more at a situation where we're going to have a whole spectrum of electric vehicles. Cars are going to become smaller, lighter and electric. Cycles are going to become electric and faster and given that they are then all doing the same speed, are probably going to be using the same lanes. So in terms of a forward-looking document, I'm quite happy with it, except that I don't think it really anticipates the changes that electric vehicles, car and cycle, are going to bring about and that having separate infrastructure for cycles and cars is in the future not going to be appropriate because they're all going to be going the same speed anyway. So with that, one little suggestion, if I may, in terms of how this forward-looking document is going to anticipate what goes on. Happy to vote for it. I hope that the cycling fundamentalists among us don't get to spend too much of the rate payer's money building a whole lot of separate cycleways, which for the future cycle, cyclists are certainly not going to be appropriate because you're not going to be able to go fast enough on them. So with that proviso, my qualified support, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Collins, I apologize for not coming to you earlier. Yes?
It's quite all right. It's nothing as elaborate as that, all right?
Thank you.
I was just sitting, browsing through, looking at and admiring the photograph on the front and doing, we're spoiling to find cyclists, actually, but it just seemed that that was a waste, the back page. And perhaps the whole thing should be extended down, taking a bit of the university and the stadium or the main street rather than just have a blank page. We are, as we say, one of the greatest small cities of the world, so show as much of it as we can.
Thank you.
That's all.
Yeah, they had a photographer out over the weekend to put more photos through the document generally, so I'll ask...
Sure, if I may, but...
Councillor Nunes?
Thanks, Madam Chair, just a couple of comments. Firstly, to Sarah and her team, job well done. I think this is the second significant strategy document that's been produced in-house and based on the relatively minor number of comments around the table about, you know, reflecting where we're, where we're at as a, as a council and reflecting, you know, the workshop involvement that we've had and reflecting the challenges we've got. It's a very good job that's been done. The first time that we've included walking, cycling, parking, all in the transport strategy. So I look forward to the feedback that we get from the wider community and I hope they embrace and realise that, you know, we're dealing with the whole transport system with this particular strategy for the first time, so it's great. Madam Chair, just picking up on the point you made about the lack of mapping of the outlying areas and I'd like to think that because the transport network, the roading network essentially is eight or nine hundred kilometres of urban roads and the equal amount of rural roads, and I'd like to think that those folk in the outlying areas will take the opportunity to submit as well. And it'd be good to have feedback, you know, right across the city because we are a, quite a unique city in that regard, having a huge rural catchment, which obviously roading is a pretty important part of their life.
Any other questions? Now, councillor Butcher, I put you down the second because it was sort of a moot point, I hope you have that. I'd just like to echo the thought, the thanks given to the staff for this and especially for those that attended the workshops, which I think made the process a lot easier to understand. And there were fantastic workshops and the councillors who attended it, they were very much appreciated. So thanks to the whole team, please, Sarah. Okay, I'll put the motion. All of them, please, so, aye?
Aye.
Against carried, thank you. I am now going to advocate here, councillor Stevenson.
So we have the establishment of the district licensing committee, item five. We've got our two tenants here. So would you like to talk to us about anything that we need to be aware of with this?
Yes, the district licensing committee must be in place by the 10th of December. On that day, the committee or the OTC will consider and decide on all implications, whether it be opposed or unopposed. Workshops for district licensing committee members are being run by the Ministry of Justice in late October, back into November. We were hoping for the Ministry of Justice to give some sort of guidance on how we select these people, but all we've done is provide position descriptors. So I would propose that we make position descriptions based on those descriptors and advertise in the OPT seeking expressions of interest for those positions. The choice the committee needs to make with the councillor to make is whether or not the chairperson is an elected member or a commissioner. For the reasons in the report, I'd be recommending a commissioner be that person. And the main reason is, based on Ministry of Justice figures and the number of applications we received in the 2011, 2012 financial year, it would be about 18 hours a week based on a 48-week year worked for the chairperson. An elected member may not have that time to do that.
Can I just ask about the deputy chairperson? Can that also be a member from the community?
No, the act is quite specific and I saw clarification last week on that, the deputy chair must be an elected person.
Must be.
Must be.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if there's any questions, but I've got you, thank you. Councillor Butcher?
Well, I, I would prefer it to be, obviously, the commissioner, commissioner to be the chair. And I'd prefer to see two elected people on there to make up the three people. Why have you said, or why, why has it come through that it's only one elected person, one elected person on there? Is that the time constraints as well?
They just clarified at a webinar last week that the committee members can be elected members so long as they meet criteria, can be anyone.
So if we go over the recommendations here, does that leave it open for the other two members to just be elected people and maybe if, if there's not enough elected people who want to put their hands forward, hands up for a position, then it can go back to asking a member of the community? Or does that do away, you know, what we've got here is, I don't, you know, a commissioner, one elected person is the deputy chair and then the person from the community?
The Ministry of Justice was saying that the deputy chair wouldn't normally, normally sit on the committee. That person's only there when the chairperson's unavailable for whatever reason. And Sarah, there's quite a bit of discussion at the webinar. That person's only there when the chairperson's unavailable for whatever reason. And there was quite a bit of discussion at the webinar last week on that point.
Me, Cal?
I just, just to clarify, elected members includes community board members as well as councillors.
Oh, yeah. Okay, Councillor Tavish?
I've got a query about the local alcohol policy, which is being, I guess, developed in parallel, isn't it, with the process of establishing the committee? And maybe this is slightly off topic, I don't know, tell me for this. But I'm just, I'm interested in knowing how the public can get involved in that process and where in the development that policy is at currently.
I hope to have a workshop for elected members mid-August for a draft policy to go to PNE on the 3rd of September. And for the consultation period that is supposed to last during the, over the period of the body elections, so that submissions close after the elections.
And so then the hearing panel to hear that will be established after the elections?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Thank you. And Councillor Vennas?
I've, I've read this just now with a bit of surprise to see how much they're being paid. The Ministry of Justice has laid down these payment amounts. Have you got any idea why they're that high, given what councillors put in ours wise and get remunerated with otherwise?
There was another subject brought up at the webinar last week and people around the country are surprised that's so low.
Yeah, that's the rest of the world.
It's lower down on the scale apparently.
Okay, my other question, should I want to double my councillor's income? Is, is one of the requirements of being on one of these committees that you actually drink, are non drinkers eligible?
Yes, thank you.
Good question. Have we got any other questions to beat that one?
I'm sorry, can I just clarify again, I'm somewhat confused with that. So the Chair has to be the commissioner, right, outside of the elected.
That's the choice, the choice today is to decide whether.
Yeah, but number one, the recommendation today is that the commission's supported by the chief executive. But there is a commissioner outside of councils, none of the elected people, right? That's fine, I can get that, I'm fine with that. But did you then say that the deputy chair would have to be an elected person, but that person would not sit on the hearing panel normally? They would only come in if the commissioner was not available? So normally we need three people, a commissioner and two others. Those two could be elected or they could not be. If the commissioner's not available, the Chair probably of PNE would come in and take the place of that commissioner, including the other two who are there anyway. And they may or may not be elected people.
Thank you. So if there's no other questions, is someone wanting to move the? Yes, sorry, you did too. So any wishes to move, all four?
Yeah, and I will specify.
About the community bill, please.
Well, I will specify that the, number one as stands, number two, that the council appoints elected members as deputy chairperson and I'll nominate Councillor Noon for that role. And number three and number four as they stand. And that my reasoning is that, I accept number one for the reasons staff have given, that it's better to be a commissioner. And I would point out that we councillors obligated legally to establish a list of, as it says here in 5.3, the council will need to establish and maintain and publish a list of people approved as members of the DLC. I think that we could, I don't think there's anything precluding that list, including elected members. And so I think in order to get as much community input into this as possible, we establish that the Chair is going to be appointed by the chief executive. I'm nominating Councillor Noon as deputy chairperson because that person has to be elected and they are there to stand in in any case. And that the rest be opened up for a list to be developed of suitable people on which elected members can be, can be put as well. Although I do see a slight, in some ways, if we can find suitable people in the community who aren't elected members, particularly councillors, that could probably be a good thing. Because we will be developing, the, the, the job of this committee is to implement local alcohol policy. That's what their job is, they're not there to make policy, we are. And so in some ways, I think it's quite a good idea to separate the functions of the committee from the formulation of policies, which is our job. Those are my reasons for moving as I have.
So we've got one to move with Andrew Noon named as person four, Councillor Noon. And two, sorry, and who goes second?
Can I just double check something?
Yep.
Does this have to start from December this year? Councillor Noon might not be here. Sorry, I'm sure you will.
No, that's different.
Can't you just mention the deputy chair or something rather than the actual name?
Well, we haven't got a lot of choice, we've got, we've got to put someone in there. If, if it changes, then we change it.
That's fine.
Yeah, we've got to do something.
Can you just put the Chair of Infrastructure Services in there?
I think it needs to be a name.
Having a hearing experience.
The qualifications don't relate to being a Chair of Infrastructure Services. The qualifications relate to experience in these hearings issues.
Okay, that's fine, I'll have you just a second.
Can I just indicate, when you deal with either two, do you deal with them separately? Because I want to sit out of the recommendation two.
So we'll take one, three and four, and it's been moved and seconded by Councillor Butcher. Is one of us to speak, one, three or four?
I just want clarification, it says, in three and four, how are we actually going to appoint? We're not going to be actually having?
The process.
A process here, because to me, I'm just concerned and I asked the question of staff, how are we actually going to make those appointments, what's the process?
As I said, the Ministry of Justice were hoping, they were actually hoping they'd give some steering, steering on that, they haven't. So I would propose that appendix one, being the descriptors for the positions, that they be turned into a position description and then seek expression of interest in people, we just make this up suitable people based on.
I can just say, great.
Two processes, two broad options. Either it's given to the chief exec, you readvertise, it's given to the chief exec to appoint, or it comes back to this committee for confirmation of appointment.
Probably confirmation of two, that the chief executive recommend council the preferred, his preferred options from the list here.
I would like to see that, because if you're going to have elected members being eligible, it is, I don't think it's a fair process to bring it back to a committee.
No.
So therefore, it should be a chief executive.
With the, with the chief executive to make a recommendation?
And then we'll just run the process as we would for any position appointment, through the advertising and selection and stuff. For, for a recommendation.
Yeah, happy with that, Councillor. Okay, so if there's no more questions, I'll move one, three and four.
He's reading it, I think I should stand at four as well.
Okay, then we'll move one and three.
Thank you.
Okay, and if there's no more discussion, I'll put that, all those in favour, one and three. Those against, and that's passed, and now I'll move two separately. And it's moved by the Mayor and seconded by Councillor Butcher. No discussion, all those in favour?
Aye.
Those against, it's passed, and moving number four, Mayor and Councillor Butcher. No discussion, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against.
Can you put the number five?
Yes, I was just about to say, I'll move that the process for selection of members be that the discretion of the CEO to recommend members to the council based on the criteria.
In the appendix one.
Sorry, in the appendix one.
And it's moved by the Mayor and seconded by Councillor Butcher. No discussion, all those in favour?
Aye.
Those against, and it's passed. Lovely, so the last item. So that's like the notification of a junior item to consideration by the Chair. No, we want to keep the meeting close, thank you.